Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Muskegon City Commission Meeting for April 25, 2017. Before we begin the proceedings, I'd like to invite up Pastor Tim Cross from Living Word Church to lead us in prayer, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Anyone who wants to join us, please do.
All right. Heavenly Father, we come to you in the precious name of Jesus, and you said that we were to pray for those in authority. And, Father, I want to thank you for each of these city commissioners. I want to thank you for their sacrifice and willingness to serve our community. We say thank you for them. And, Father, specifically for Commissioner Turnquist and all that he has dealt with in these past few weeks. Father, we ask in Jesus' name that you would help him in this recovery process, his body to recover as he's been through this physical battle, that strength would come to his body, and specifically even his appetite would come back. We ask this in Jesus' name. Father, you said in your word that we were to pray for the place that we live in, pray for the peace and prosperity of that community. So, Father, especially as we head into warmer months and summer months and just a few weeks from now, Father, we pray for peace and safety on our streets. Father, we pray for really a spirit of peace, and that, Father, that you would grace our police officers, our public safety officers throughout this season, Father, to help keep us safe throughout these summer months and our streets to be a safe place to be upon. And we ask for the prosperity of our county, that you would grant these commissioners wisdom and those that deal in our city to help open doors for prosperity to come, for our businesses to prosper, and that, Father, that you would bless our homes as well, and we ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have the roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Hood?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Commissioner German?
Here.
Commissioner Renssensipiga?
Here.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Galvin?
Here.
I have a number of recognitions and proclamations to address. For as far as we try as a people in a society, sometimes we come up short, short to the point of devastation and destruction. So it is my honor, and at the same time a sad thing, to have to recognize the following issues that face our society, even though we've said never again. But whereas the United States government has declared April a sexual assault awareness month in peace over violence, and has declared April 26, 2017, as Denim Day, I resolve that the City of Muskegon does hereby proclaim the month of April 2017 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and we designate April 26, 2017, as Denim Day, and urge everyone who can to wear jeans on April 26 to help communicate the message that there is no excuse and never an invitation to rape. And as pressing, whereas the National Child Abuse Prevention Month will be recognized throughout the United States during the month of April, I therefore proclaim April 27, 2017, to be Child Abuse Prevention Day in Muskegon, and urge all citizens to work together to help end child abuse and neglect, and do so significantly in the years to come. Because they're our babies, and they're supposed to be brought into the world with love. And one of the most horrific examples of our ability to become inhuman and monstrous, whereas the Holocaust was the state-sponsored systematic persecution and annihilation of European Jewry by Nazi Germany and its collaborators between 1933 and 1945, six million Jews were murdered, as were Roma, the Gypsies, people with disabilities and Poles who were also targeted for destruction or decimation for racial, ethnic, or national reasons, and millions more, including homosexuals, Jehovah Witnesses, Soviet prisoners of war, and political dissidents, all suffered grievous oppression and death under Nazi tyranny. Therefore, be it resolved that we recognize the days of remembrance, Yom HaShua. And we will remember the victims of the Holocaust and honor the survivors as well as the rescuers, the liberators, the just that hid their Jewish brethren and those other people pointed out for prescription. And we further proclaim that we, as citizens of the City of Muskegon, will work to promote human dignity and confront hate whenever and wherever it occurs. May we have the consent agenda, please?
Approval of minutes, City Clerk, summary request, to approve minutes of the April 10, 2017 Work Section Meeting and the April 11, 2017 Regular City Commission Meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. Sale of an unbuildable vacant lot at 1251 East Lakeston Avenue, Planning and Economic Development, summary request, to approve the sale of the vacant, unbuildable lot at 1251 East Lakeston Avenue to Emerald City LLC, owners of the adjacent property at 1249 East Lakeston Avenue. They would like to acquire the property so that they may combine them and put in addition onto the back of the existing building. They have offered $600 for the parcel. Staff recommendation, to approve the resolution, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution and the deed. Telephone system upgrade, information technology, summary request, a mandatory upgrade to our telephone system is required. Currently, our telephone system is connected to Central Dispatch's system. Our system is redundant with Central Dispatch. If you recall, this current system is saving the city $1 million over a 10-year period of time. At one time, the city's telephone bills were $10,000 each month, but we have been able to reduce those lines to just $20,000 a year. This upgrade is mandatory, and Cisco will discontinue support in July. Staff recommendation, staff recommends approval of the upgrade to the current Cisco system as requested, and authorize staff to sign the agreement. Muskegon Public Schools Youth Basketball League and Growing Goods Funding Agreement, Planning and Economic Development, summary request, the City of Muskegon is recommending approval of the agreement with Muskegon Public Schools for the management of the Youth Basketball League and Open Gym and Growing Goods Program for 2017. It is the mission of Muskegon Public Schools to provide the best for every child every day. With the support of the City of Muskegon Programs continues to promote the fundamental core values of respect, health, integrity, and sportsmanship, as well as providing a safe, welcoming, and healthy environment for the youth. Staff recommendation, to approve the Muskegon Public Schools Funding Agreement. Fleet Replacement Vehicle DPW Equipment, summary request, the Equipment Division is requesting permission to purchase one F-250 pickup from Gornow Ford, the MI Deal State Contract Holder. Cost for this vehicle is $25,654, coming from the Equipment Division Fund. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to purchase one F-250 pickup from Gornow Ford, the MI Deal State Contract Holder. Leaf Vac DPW Equipment, summary request, the Equipment Division is requesting permission to purchase one Leaf Vac coming from Fredrickson Equipment Supply, the sole source dealer for this brand of equipment. Cost for this vac is $29,000, coming from the Equipment Division Fund. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to purchase one Leaf Vac coming from Fredrickson Equipment Supply, the source dealer for this brand of equipment. Annex HBAC Replacement City Manager, summary request, the Commission previously approved the replacement of certain components of the HVAC system in the annex. The original estimates were set near $42,000. The project has been completed and did require some scope changes. The updated final cost of the replacement is $52,635. Staff recommendation, to authorize staff to award the HVAC replacement project to Northside Heating and Cooling. Grand authority to CNS Director to Purchase HUD Homes for Home Buyer Program, Community Neighborhood Services, summary request, to grant authority to the Director of Community Neighborhood Services to bid on and enter into agreements to purchase property on behalf of the City of Muskegon for rehabilitation. Properties will be used to sell to eligible buyers through the home buyer program. Staff recommendation, to authorize the Director of Community Neighborhood Services, Anita Bailey, to bid on and enter into agreements to purchase HUD homes on behalf of the City of Muskegon.
Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda as presented. Are there any items you wish to have removed for further discussion?
Item H, actually, item G as well.
Any others? Commissioner Johnson?
There are no others. I move to approve the consent agenda as presented, minus items G and H.
Support? It's been moved by Commissioner Johnson, seconded by Commissioner Renssensipiga, to approve, to accept the consent agenda as presented, minus item G and H. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Renssensipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item G, Commissioner German?
All right, thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize staff to award the HVAC replacement project to Northside Heating and Cooling.
Support?
It has been moved by Commissioner German, seconded by Commissioner Warren. I'm trying to find my copy. To approve the award for the HVAC replacement project to Northside Heating and Cooling. Commissioner German?
Yes, thank you. Just like to get a little bit more information about this. I know we talked about it in one of our meetings before. Where's the actual funding coming from, out of what budget?
Sure, it came from the Public Improvement Fund is where the dollars came from. And the scope change really, it was a building code requirement. Originally, we were going to put them on stands in front of the building. They were required to be moved around and back to the alley, which required us to run copper tubing and electricity and everything, essentially the whole length of the building from the front to the rear. And actually, it works better in the rear. We were putting it in the front as a way to be more efficient and save some dollars, but it was a smart move to put it in the back of the building. Now we don't see these two giant compressors kind of sitting on Shoreline Drive.
Okay, and that's compliant with coding and all of that?
Yes.
Okay.
And even with the change, they were still lower than the, we bid it out, if you remember, we bid it out, the next lower bid was like $80,000, so they were still substantially below the other bidder.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on this item? Roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Renssensipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item H, Commissioner German?
All right, thank you. I move to authorize Director of Community and Neighborhood Services, Anita Bailey, to bid on and to enter into agreement to purchase HUD homes on behalf of the City of Muskegon.
Support?
It's been moved by Commissioner German, seconded by Commissioner Johnson, to authorize the Director of Community and Neighborhood Services, Anita Bailey, to bid on and enter into agreements to purchase HUD homes on behalf of the City of Muskegon. Commissioner German?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Ms. Bailey.
Hi. Good evening, everyone.
Question for you. These HUD homes that you're talking about purchasing, are these homes that have been identified already, and how will you actually sell these homes, and what areas are they in?
Well, HUD has a site that's available to the public. It's a HUD Home Store, and so periodically, in times past, we've been able to purchase homes that have sat on that list for more than six months. We could buy them for a dollar. At times, when a house goes up on this particular site, it gives the first opportunity to people who want to purchase it and move into it as their primary residence. If no one does that within a period of two to four weeks, then it goes public to nonprofits and government entities. And if we are looking to purchase a home in a certain area where we see that there's a house on that site, we've done it in the past years where our office has entered into agreements and done that. The last time that we came before the Commission was in 2013. And so HUD, like most of us, we have to go out for bid, and this particular contractor who's handling the HUD homes is asking now that I have a resolution from the Commission. So it's just one of those things, some contractors didn't ask that in the past, and we were able to proceed, and then when we get ready to purchase that home, we bring it to the Commission and ask permission to buy it. So that will still happen, it's just that with the bid that I have offered, they wanted to see that the Commission is behind me, that I'm authorized actually to purchase and enter into agreements on behalf of the City of Muskegon.
Okay, one more question. Does the City provide any type of services to help citizens finance these homes?
Well, we don't finance, but we can provide subsidy.
Yes.
When homeowners are ready, they will find a lender, or we can give them a list of lenders that we've worked with in the past, and they would secure that loan, and we will accept a bid if they income qualify for our homes. When we purchase a home on this particular site, it's because we're trying to find a rehab, and in recent weeks, I've been just one day too late on a couple of properties that were for sale here in the City of Muskegon. We're looking for properties specifically in Sheldon Park, we've not done a rehab or built there, Glen Side and East Muskegon. And so those are areas where we haven't been, and we're looking for our next project. And so I found one in Sheldon Park, I put the bid in, and unfortunately, they want to have this extra piece of paper before they will enter into an agreement with me.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Bailey? Commissioner Turnquist?
HUD homes can be do-overs or new construction, is that correct?
HUD homes are usually older homes that have gone back to the bank, and they were funded with FHA funding, so those are HUD-funded projects. And so when they go back to HUD, then HUD puts them on this site for, as I said before, they'll limit it at first to people who want to purchase and move in, but with the market as it is, it's so hard to, it's so competitive and hard to get a rehab project these days because people are buying houses very quickly, and properties are moving pretty quick. So in this case, it was only offered to, it's at a point of being offered only to government agencies or nonprofits, and then later it'll be open to all if we don't enter into this agreement. And that means an investor could get it and use it as a rental versus a homeowner.
Commissioner Warren?
Can you just repeat, please, what makes somebody an eligible buyer?
An eligible buyer is someone who income qualifies. HUD today, actually, just sent an email saying that 2017 income limits are out. They're effective April 14 of this year. So we've just received that, and so tomorrow we'll hurry to get all of our agencies that we give money to and that have to do the same type of income qualification. You know, when we have our programs like Priority Housing Repair, when citizens come to us, we set an income limit for that program, and if you meet that, then we're able to replace a roof or take care of your furnace or plumbing issue. I was greeted today by the electrical inspector who has a citizen who is in need of an electric repair or replacement because he can see that the wires are burning on the outside of our house. So these are hazardous situations, health and safety issues, and so that's what our priority home repair is for. But we set a limit at 50% the area median income, and I think today's income for a one-person family is 31.7 now, whereas just a few weeks ago, it was 29,500. So that's, we don't set it, HUD sets those income limits, and they require that we follow those.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Renssensipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Public hearings, item A.
Public hearing for the 2017 Action Plan, Community Neighborhood Services Department, summary request, to conduct a public hearing on April 25, 2017, to receive comments from the public concerning the 2017 action plan developed by the Community Neighborhood Services Department. Staff recommendation, to direct staff to gather comments from the public and to submit the 2017 action plan to HUD after the public comment period.
Okay, Mrs. Public hearing time. This is your item again, isn't it, Anita? Hey, what do you got going here?
Okay, well, our office receives funds from the government, and so each year we have to set an annual action plan of how we're going to spend the money. We usually continue with the same activities, sometimes we variate and make changes, and so there's just a few slight changes to our budget and to our action plan for this year, but still very focused on the items that were mentioned in our consolidated plan. Those things are all on our website and available to the public. The comment period ends May 16, so there's still an opportunity, if you're reading or you're up late at night wanting to know what the City is doing, you're welcome to go to our website and look at the annual action plan, and you can call, or you can send an email, or go on our website and send what that's called, it's, well, you go to the website, and at the end of it, you can put in any comments or ask any questions, and we'll be very happy to answer those.
And where else do we maintain? Do we still have, is it the library?
Yes, the public library. At the circulation desk, they have a copy, the clerk's office has a copy, our office has a copy, and we have always had a copy at the Muskegon Housing Commission for those families that live there, that they can look and see what the City is doing in reference to public housing, and if they want to ask questions or make comments, they can do that as well.
Very good. And you'll continue to receive comments during that mandated 30-day period, which will be ending May 16?
That is correct.
And those will be included within the report as required by the federal government?
Exactly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for Anita? Are there any members of the public that would like to address the Community and Neighborhood Services Department's, what is it? Our action plan for 2017?
That's right.
Then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing, and yes, Vice Mayor?
I move to direct staff to gather comments from public and to submit the 2017 action plan to HUD after the public comment period.
And close the public hearing.
And close the public hearing.
Support?
It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, supported by Commissioner Johnson, to direct staff to gather comments from the public and to submit the 2017 action plan to HUD after the public comment period, and close the public hearing. Any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Renssensipiga?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. You might as well stay right here.
I am, I'm supposed to stay right here.
All right. New business, item A, please.
Approval of sale of city-owned home at 2112 Sampson, Community Neighborhood Services. Summary request, to approve the resolution and instruct the Community Neighborhood Services Department to complete the sale transaction with Kelma Adams for the newly constructed home at 2112 Sampson Avenue, purchase price of $158,000. Staff recommendation, to approve the resolution and direct the CNS staff to complete the
Commissioner Johnson?
I move to approve the resolution and direct CNS staff to complete the sale.
Second?
It's been moved by Commissioner Johnson, seconded by Commissioner German, to approve the resolution and direct the CNS staff to complete the sale of 2112 Sampson. Hi, Anita.
Hi there. Well, this is always the best part of my job, is to introduce families who are buying, but tonight, this family lives in Holland, and they were not able to make it tonight. So it's a three-person family, the Adams family. I know, I told the realtor that I would say that, and she says, "I don't know if you want to..."[1589.16][1589.16](laughter) But our realtor is here representing Greenridge, and Kay Pittman would you stand? So I'm sure most of you know Kay, but she has been representing Greenridge for us for the last two to four years. I think they've won the bid twice. So we're excited to move forward with new projects, but this is our first project in Bluffton, and so we're excited that we did secure a family who income qualified and was able to support this large purchase.
Very good. Questions for Anita? Commissioner Johnson?
It wasn't on the market too long, was it? I mean, it's been, not even a month, maybe?
No, I want to say, at our Citizens District Council meeting that night at 11:59, it went live, and we haven't met yet for May, and now we've got a sale, and...
Less than eight days?
Less than eight days, yeah.
Wow, yeah, that went quick. I was, you know, a little concerned, I mean, given that it had to be income-qualified in that price of, you know, I think it was on the market 159?
158.
And we sold it 158?
Right. When we have a home appraised, that's the sales price that we have to sell it, and so of course it was a little concerning for our office if, because our last two sales have been well above $100,000. So that's not been the case in the last five to 10 years. Our homes were selling at 60 and 70, and so now the market has really changed. And of course, what do people say, where it sits is what really counts, or what's the phrase?
Location.
It's location, location, location. Well, you know what? One thing about our department, and what I believe the home funds were designed to do is to allow families of all means to be able to live where they'd like to live, and a lot of people would like to live at the lake. And so this is an opportunity for a family who meets the income guidelines to be able to live in this area. And so I'm excited that we were able to pull it off without a problem. I mean, we didn't have to let the property sit for six months or more, so the houses have been selling, and so that's why we're looking at the HUD website to see if there are other homes that we can secure for homeownership versus allowing them to go to investments.
That's fantastic. I know you've been wanting to get into the beach of Bluffton neighborhood for quite a while now, and this being your first.
Yeah.
You're absolutely right, this program does help us to diversify the socioeconomic demographics of neighborhoods, and it's great that we're able to do what CNS has done in that neighborhood. And I'm happy that the house is sold, especially in eight days, wow!
Yeah.
And the past few houses have sold in the six figures, so, you know, it sounds like we've got some very diligent savers...
Very much so.
...out there that are moving into our city, so that's wonderful. I'm really happy to see that sold and look forward to more houses being developed and sold.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for Ms. Bailey? No? Thank you, Anita.
All right.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. New business, item B, please.
Approval of a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone Certificate, 285 West Western Avenue, Planning Economic Development. Summer request, an application for a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone Certificate has been received from Parkland Muskegon Incorporated for the conversion of vacant commercial space to 47 market-rate apartments at 285 West Western Avenue. The estimated project cost is $168,900 per unit. The property was approved as a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone District on December 13th, 2016. The applicant has met local and state requirements for the issuance of the NEZ certificate. They have requested the maximum 15 years for the exemption. Staff recommendation, approval of the NEZ certificate for 15 years.
Oh, okay. I move to appro, approve the NEZ certificate for 15 years to... The Neighborhood Enterprise Zone Certificate at 285 West Western Avenue.
Support? It's been moved by Commissioner German, supported by Commissioner Rensselaasipiga, to approve the NEZ certificate for 15 years for 285 West Western Avenue. Good evening, Mr. Francine.
Good evening. The time has finally come for this project to get underway. We're excited. This should be the final piece. I'd just like to clarify that this is for a 15-year exemption. We usually issued 12-year maximums, unless it's a large development for apartments or condos. We did approve a 15-years for the Terrace Plaza projects last year, so this is another one we're looking at approving for 15 years.
Very good.
And we do have Mr. Rooks in attendance tonight. Anybody has any questions?
Any questions for staff? Any questions for Mr. Rooks?
Yeah, just a quick question for Mr. Rooks. Do you have any idea exactly what timeline this project would be completed?
Oh, you have it, come on up.
I mean, maybe you can just kind of enlighten us again on what's going on, and where you at, and with this project?
I can, thank you. The timeline is, well, do I need to say my address? 75 West Walton, Muskegon. So, the timeline is already started. We began within days after signing a, an inch-thick construction contract with Buster Brothers Construction. That was a couple weeks ago, and then, since then, we've had six people in there every day, scraping lead paint, there's probably 55 bags of lead paint. They're going to finish this Thursday. We have a construction meeting on Thursday to talk about all the next steps, but the, there's a little bit of pipe insulation left with asbestos. There's mastic on the floor that will all get scraped up by an asbestos contractor, so basically, we're cleansing the building of lead paint and asbestos, so that all the crews can get started with the rest of the demo, which includes chipping all the plaster off the walls and, and so on. But anyway, that's the, that's the next three weeks, but the bottom line is, there's a timeline agreed to within the city documents, and my company's documents that we've both signed, and that timeline, without having them in front of me, I believe, requires us to have the exterior completion done by November 1, with a grace period for certain conditions of two months additional. That being said, we have a buckhoist that's an exterior temporary construction elevator that will go on the side of the building, and that will stay on the building until late spring next year, in 2018. And so that part of the exterior can't be complete until the buckhoist comes down, nor can the construction entrance be complete until the buckhoist comes down, or until the project's complete on the inside. But the, the schedule is to have the entire project done by July 1st of 2018, with some periods for extension if we run into any issues.
Okay, thank you.
So, we're talking about next summer, 2018.
Huge project, yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Rooks? Commissioner Turnquist?
There's one or two sample apartments already completed inside.
There's one sample that was more designed as a condominium for a different type of project, and because all of the plumbing and all of the electrical and everything needs to be stacked to be the most efficient, that will, that's coming out as part of the demo process, as is those windows for that unit, those will come out, too.
Commissioner Warren?
Will there be roof access for residents that are living there, or for, I know at some point, there was maybe a restaurant, or there just was talk of that in the past, is that part of the plans?
So, the way the layout works is from the top down, yes, there's a rooftop deck, and there will be a small clubhouse in that area that used to have, on the ninth floor, a large elevator room for all the huge elevator equipment they needed back in the day, and all that will be removed, and then we'll be adding some windows, and that will all be a, a small clubhouse with a little kitchen and a bathroom just outside of the rooftop deck.
Okay.
And then from the eighth floor down to the third floor, that's the 47 apartments, and they pretty much are identical as they line up above each other, and then on the second floor and the first floor, that would be what I would call Phase Two, that, what will be complete by, to answer your question fully, Commissioner German, is the, the timeline includes only completing that to a white box level, because we believe with all the new windows on the side of the building, we're likely to find a, a tenant, whether it's a restaurant or bar, a distillery, a brewery, a, a, an office use, a retail use, a store, it's a bank, anything could go in that space in the first and second floor, but we're not going to finish it like on the same timeline as the apartments. The exterior will be finished, but the interior won't be until we find the tenant or the buyer. And then the third phase really is the basement level, and that's a, a phase that would be the hardest to predict the timeline on, but our, our dream would be to cut part of the sidewalk out, and then put windows in the 12-foot-tall basement, and, and then light, natural light would illuminate into the basement, and, and that would take advantage of that big vault downstairs, and, and as you could incorporate that into the, the retail or the commercial or restaurant space that would be downstairs.
Anything else for Mr. Rooks? Mr. Johnson?
Given the expected range of rates that the apartment's going to be going for, and are you accepting pre-leases now, and if so, who should people contact to arrange a pre, a pre-lease?
We are putting a sign on the side of the building with our office number, and my assistant will be initially handling it, and then there will be an info at highpointflats.com website on the sign, and the sign will advertise the date of completion, it'll advertise what we're doing, it'll give credit to the contractor, the architect, our company, the City of Muskegon, and the MEDC, and the law firm that did all the tax credits. And so that sign will be our method of initially announcing and making it possible to have people get in touch with us in pre-lease. And then after a while, we'll, we'll get a leasing agent involved, and that leasing agent will ultimately work there a few days a week and keep the project full.
Okay. So, is this the NEZ certificate, is this the final piece of the puzzle in terms of your financing structure and incentive package? Do you have anything outstanding at the state that you're waiting to hear back on, or is, or from any other private financing sources, or is it pretty much wrapped up and we're full steam forward?
We're full steam forward. There's always details with paperwork to finish up. I think, I think with regard to the city, we've, we've got the documents back from the Register of Deeds, and I think we're, we're pretty much done with you guys. And the state, we've got what we need, and contractors, we have everything. So, you know, this is, this is the biggest final step. There's details to work out. You know, obviously, we have to process a lot of paperwork along the way with the state to keep things rolling.
Excellent, thank you. Very excited to see this project kickoff and soon come to completion, hopefully all by summer of next year, and hopefully we'll fill it up fairly quickly with, with tenants, both in the residential and the commercial. So, thank you for your work, and, and thank you to city staff as well for your diligence and working with Parkland Properties and Mr. Rooks here on moving this forward. It's a piece of our history, but it's going to be a prominent part of our future, so thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience, and it's been a long time coming. As you know, I had the property for sale for seven or eight years, and I couldn't find any takers, so this was either, it was either going to happen with me doing it or not, so I'm proud that we figured out a way to do it, and I appreciate everybody working with me on it, including the city manager and, and the rest of the staff.
Good. I have a, I carry a hard hat in my trunk, so if you need any help, you have my number.
It's blue and yellow, the one that we make people wear in there?
No, no, it's a white one with the city seal on it.
Okay.
Thanks, Sean, good luck. You bet.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Galeran?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. New business, item C, please.
Approval of a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone Certificate, 275 West Clay Avenue, Planning Economic Development. Summer request, an application for a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone Certificate has been received from Berkshire Muskegon LDHA LLC for the 16 market-rate units and their proposed mixed-use development at 275 West Clay Avenue. The estimated cost of the project is $183,864 per unit. The property was approved as a Neighborhood Enterprise One District on February 14th, 2017. The certificate would only apply for the 16 market-rate units and not the 68 subsidized residential units or commercial units. Staff recommendation, approval of the NEZ certificate for a duration of 15 years.
Oh, you're back.
Hello.
Hi.
This is another one, we're recommending 15 years because of the 16 units. Also, will be apartments only going to pertain to the 16 market-rate units, and we have a pilot on the subsidized units and a commercial tax abatement on the commercial units on the first floor.
Any questions for Mike? Commissioner Rensselaasipiga?
I move to approve the issuance of the NEZ certificate for the duration of 15 years at 275 West Clay Avenue.
Support? Who supported it?
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Rensselaasipiga, supported by the Vice Mayor, to approve the NEZ certificate for a duration of 15 years for 275 West Clay Avenue, and now you can ask your questions.
When do we expect, I hear both the building permits have been proposed, when are you expecting shovels in the ground and construction to get, get underway?
Uh, yes, and probably the next coming month, we should see some development there. Unfortunately, Mr. Heffron, who's leading the project, couldn't make it here tonight, tried to come from Chicago, so he apologized, he couldn't make it today.
Okay. Excellent.
So, good. More holes in the ground and buildings going up.
Yes, sir.
It's a good thing. It's a good thing. Anything else, commissioners? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Rensselaasipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galeran?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. As long as you're there, Mike, stay around, because you've got to handle the next one.
All right.
Okay, good. New business, item D.
Amendment to the zoning ordinance form-based code urban residential, planning economic development. Summer request, staff-initiated request to amend the form-based code urban residential context area section of the zoning ordinance to allow small multiplex buildings for multi-family uses. Staff recommendation, to approve the zoning ordinance amendment. Committee recommendation, the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the ordinance amendment with two members absent.
Commissioner Rensselaasipiga?
I move we approve the zoning ordinance amendment regarding the form-based code urban residential for allowing small multiplex buildings for multi-family uses.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Rensselaasipiga, seconded by Commissioner Warren, to approve the zoning ordinance amendment for form-based code urban residential. Take her away, Mike.
All right, so I have a couple more handouts we're passing out right now. One is the map. The blue area depicts where we already have the urban residential context area. As you can see, there's not many parcels. The red is what we are proposing at Planning Commission on May 11th, to add more urban residential context areas. Some of them are actually already in multifamily zones, so that will be going to commission, Planning Commission May 11th, and then the following city commission meeting for approval. And the other handout, what you may already have, some of these in your packet, is examples of the small multiplex type of buildings. What they are are multi-unit family housing, which allows for up to six units, and to get a feel of some of the ones we have in Muskegon already, you could think of some of the houses you would already see on Pec Street are some good examples. And also, they would have to be on 50-foot-wide lots, minimum, to have this type of large development on there.
Questions for Mike, Mr. Warren?
Was that the, with everything we talked about at the last meeting about the smaller lot size, was that the larger one?
So, there were two issues that we presented on for the smaller lot. There was the small lot zoning, and then there was also the multifamily part, and this is kind of the multifamily part aspect to it. So, the urban residential context area of the form-based code only requires 30-foot lots for like single fam, family development, and, and two-family development, but we have the ability to require larger lots on different types of housing. So, this context area already allows single-family, two-family, and row houses, so we're proposing just to go a little bit farther and try to create some more density.
Commissioner Rensselaasipiga?
I know one issue, and I think some residents, you know, there's been a concern in some of these neighborhoods about turning single-family homes into multifamily homes, so how would this relate to that?
So, the only way you could do that is if you met the minimum size requirements for an apartment, and that is 675 square feet for a one-bedroom, 875 for a two-bedroom, and 1,200 for a three-bedroom. So, any of the, most of the existing single-family homes that are going to be in these areas are going to be too small to carve up anyways, unless they've already been split up. So, they would have to meet that minimum size. What this was really intended to do is to allow for new construction, because we do kind of have a lot of what we call these missing middle homes. They just weren't built like that, they were large, single-family homes that have been carved up over the years. And when they were carved up, that was before we had these minimum apartment sizes, so that's why we see a lot of the ones that have many units with very small square footage.
Commissioner Warren?
So, to clarify that, there's some that are apartments now that have been like grandfathered in, is that what?
Yes.
So, they're too small, they wouldn't be approved now, but they...
Right.
Okay.
And we have the provision, at least how the ordinance reads under the R1 district, is if it's non-conforming for more than two years, if you cease to rent one of your apartments for two years, it's supposed to convert back, but a couple years ago, we put an exemption in saying, if it's already been split up and it meets the minimum apartment size, you can apply to keep it that way, so this shouldn't affect that at all.
Okay.
And, and they wouldn't be, excuse me, they wouldn't be penalized or anything for back fees or anything like that, if they?
No.
Okay. Okay.
I think the main issue that came up, especially for folks living in the neighborhood, was to make sure that we weren't going back to the really-nilly carving up of single-family homes, and the protections are here, the zoning is here, the minimum apartment size is, you know, are here to protect from the excesses of the past where we saw, you know, homes carved up, and so I, and I think we did a good job... And so I, and I think we did a good job with sharing that and getting input back from the affected neighborhoods.
Yeah, I'm really glad we had the public sessions. We might have been a little too ambitious with our desire to allow multi-family and even more areas. We had a couple people who pointed out some of the great success we've had in some of the areas where there are strong neighborhoods with owner-occupied units and single-family homes and a lot of that work was done over the past 15 to 20 years and we don't want to go into these areas and kind of undo some of that work. So, we really kind of zoned around the areas that we felt that were affected the most by that zoning.
Anything else for Mike?
Okay, excuse me, Mike, could you go back over and talk about what it is, these red?
So, the blue is where we already have the urban residential context area. So those are the only parcels that it would affect and if you see the green arrow on there, that's where city hall is, just for reference. And I did want to include the red because that's where we're proposing to add even more. So, if the planning commission approves and city commission approves in May to rezone these parcels, this is what the whole area would look like where these type of homes could go.
A quick question about that. So with the lot sizes, that's, that has to do with the urban residential type as well? So would, are we expanding that area too or?
No, the lot sizes all stay the same for urban residential because they're already only allowed or required to have a 30-foot
Okay.
minimum for single fam. The form-based code breaks it down very specific, a lot more than the regular zoning does. So, we don't have to change any of the lot sizes. The only lot sizes we're really changing is saying you can, you can have a 30-foot lot in this zone, you just can't build a small multiplex six-unit on it. You have to have a 50-foot lot to do that. So you'll have more options with what you can do if you have a property with 50-foot minimum in these areas.
Anything else for Mike?
So the impetus of this change is to allow multi-family complexes to be built, not to allow current homes to be cut apart and turned apartments. It's to create new builds, find to fill that missing middle
Yes.
residential options
Yeah.
in our urban residential areas.
And like I said, I think we, it was very beneficial getting some of the public comments so we could kind of minimize this a little bit, but I think after we see some development in these properties, we can kind of convince everybody that it's a good thing and, you know, it may be beneficial to expand this in the future if necessary.
And that the form-based code design parameters, it's meant for these properties to look, to blend in with the residential area as well?
Yeah.
Not to stand out as, you know, concrete boxes that are apartments, but rather to blend in with a typical neighborhood residential.
Yeah, and you can see with some of the examples that these houses would blend in very well with downtown.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Warren?
Have we had any developers recently that are interested in this type of project that maybe didn't proceed because it wasn't allowable at the time?
Most of the people that we deal with are talking about existing homes they want to carve up.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's kind of hard to say if there's a demand out there because we just simply don't allow it very many places. So, I have had calls from a few people over the years wanting to know where we could do this and we do have a few areas, especially on Muskegon Street, between here and the gas station.
Mm-hmm.
There are some empty lots that are zoned for multi-family. Obviously, they haven't been developed, but that's just one area they're allowed, so we feel that allowing it more places, we're going to see more desire, especially if you look at the lots between 8th and 9th and Webster and Clay, the city actually owns a large chunk of land there. That could be a very good development coming off the seaway for multi-family homes.
Okay.
Anything else for Mike? Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Renssensipiga?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Galron?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Is there any other business from the body this evening? Now I'd like to recognize one of Muskegon's great friends, County Commissioner Charles Nash. How are you this evening, sir?
Wonderful, Mayor.
And you come bearing gifts?
Bearing gifts.
I love gifts.
Thank you, Mayor Galron and to all the city commissioners and city manager Peterson. As you know, yearly, we, our Muskegon County clerk actually does an excellent job with her staff and developing our county directories and I apologize for being a little bit late, but I come bearing your new 217 directories.
Thank you.
That'll get you through 218 and
Because now I know how to get a hold of them.
Just in case you don't like reading your books, she also put together some flyers for each one of you, but I, I got my notice that I was running late, so, you know, Ms. Waters don't like to be late, so I made sure that we answered the clerks. I heard the clerks were looking for these directories, so I wanted to make sure I got them over here and it was just some scheduling errors that I had, but I always know you're after a full bore, so I made sure I got over here today. But those are the new directories. I did hear that these may be one of the last sets that we're able to afford to make, so I would say hang on to those tight. Hopefully, maybe we'll find a way to squeeze it out, but that's what I'm hearing is that might be one of our last set that the clerk department is able to produce. Maybe something that the county may have to grab or we have to find a way to fund some different way, but we want to make sure you guys have those because, you know, even as a city and county, we work together, so in a spirit of unity, we want to make sure that we're able to connect each other and then connect our citizens to whatever services we needed to get them connected to. So, you know, and like I say, in a spirit of unity, we want to make sure we continue to keep working together and doing a great job.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Nash, and please extend our best regards to Madam Clerk.
I would do that and also, you know, on behalf of the chair and the county, I don't want to leave them out either. Everyone has their place to go. I'm your city commi, I mean, I'm your county commissioner, so I wanted to make sure I'm here and like I say, I'm half a Ben Cross who is one of your other county commissioners. We just wanted to make sure everyone stayed connected.
Very good.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Good to see you. It takes us to public comment time. Members of the public are welcome to come before the commission to address us. Each individual is given three minutes. Please address the chair. Oftentimes, we can't address your question immediately, but I can certainly put you with the appropriate city staff or, we dump everything on you, don't we Frank? Or we just dump everything on the city manager, but we can help put you in the right direction with any concerns that you may bring or if you just want to make any type of comment, you're more than welcome. Sir, you had, you look familiar.
A little bit. Thank you, Steve. Dave Alexander, executive director, downtown Muskegon now. If you weren't downtown Saturday night, some of you I saw in terms of what was going on, just think we are in the middle of April, folks, and the place was hopping. The establishments, the institutions were filled, our parking lots were filled and they were standing in line to enjoy our downtown. So I think there's a lot coming forward in this summer. And understand that you keep having these construction project developments come before you. There's another one that Lynn Moore, I believe, has discussed that will probably be coming before you from Frank, but I want to thank city staff and commission for all that you've done. We will have, I predict, at least eight construction projects under, construction here this summer. We've got five or six already. MCC, Terrace Plaza, Terrace Point Landing, Heritage Square Commons, now we see High Point Flats and with this approval, the Berkshire will be the next one. There's two others that are out there that are awaiting, already you have given your approvals to, but are awaiting state approvals from the Michigan Strategic Fund Board and that is 351 West Western, the six stories on what we all know as the volleyball lot at Unit 7 and also Watermark Center. So we hope that they would be also under construction and moving forward to their next part of adding to our downtown. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, David. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the commission? Sir, please. I could just have you come forward and give your name and address.
Yeah, I'm Duane Little. I'm over there at 1076 Ambrosia and I've heard tonight about a lot of construction and positive things going on. My reason I came down here, I was kind of interested in finding out if I could anything about some of the places around town that, you know, like abandoned housing that's kind of fallen down and doesn't seem like anybody's taking care of it. And that, that was basically my question. I'll be brief. I was just wondering if there's any, anything that you've planned or any plans that you may have to address that situation.
Well, we do have a very aggressive dangerous building program, which has been expanding over the past 20 years. Currently, city staff along with Safe Built Incorporated, which is our inspections arm, handles those dangerous buildings. Sometimes it takes a while due to the fact that the owners of even a crappy building are given due process and it goes through a long process of having to come before a review board and the like, but what I can say to you, we do have an aggressive program. We took down multiple houses last year, over 50 houses, but if you have specific addresses that are of concern to you, we would certainly like you to make contact and give those addresses to Safe Built here at city hall.
I don't have addresses, but there's a house on the corner of Terrace and Delaware, or I mean Delaware, I think it's Terrace and Delaware. And there's a couple over there on Apple Street, basically across from Charles T. D. and Coolings.
Okay.
That seem to be, I mean, I walk around there and I see them and it looks like they're collecting signs on the door that says, "Do not enter, this property condemned."
I can't say in that particular area within Angel Nelson and East Nims, they have been a focus area, but they're going block to block. Unfortunately, there's so many of these deteriorated
Yeah, that was my point, that there are several and of course, what you're trying to do is make the city attractive
Right.
with the new construction and the things that you do. And so, you know, I was slightly concerned about all these dilapidated, falling down houses.
Sure enough.
It's obviously incumbent upon all of us to keep our property in some kind of decent repair, you know, so it doesn't look like the city dump has moved in. So, anyway, that's all I have to say.
Okay, but when you, when you do have those specific areas and whatnot, feel free to please contact Safe Built or come down to city hall and we'll help identify those properties and inspect them.
Yeah, some are obviously worse than others, but thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you for keeping an eye out. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the commission? If not, vice mayor?
There's nothing else. I move to adjourn.
It's been moved by the vice mayor, supported by Commissioner Johnson, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, folks. Good to see everyone this evening. Thank you for coming out.
Good to see you.
(music)